I think the agenda is to approve our minutes from the July fifteenth meeting. Did anybody have any addition or corrections? I did not. Make a motion to approve the minutes from July fifteen.
Seven.
Oh, there's a line.
Aye.
Okay, Michelle.
Okay, at our August council meeting, we had a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning map, which you all heard last month, and that was approved, just adding the four properties that we annexed at Cedar Lane and Appleman Way's parcel. We also confirmed EDUs for the splash and car wash. The council had put that, said it wasn't a priority for their additional EDUs until we finished the wastewater treatment plan expansion, but we do have enough EDUs. We're very close to the completion of that project, so they did say they could go ahead because they didn't want to start building if they weren't going to be able to open whenever they finish, so they did confirm the EDUs would be available. We also accepted all of the streets in Phase One and Two of Meadows, a town run one. That is completed now, that development. We also requested to award a construction contract to add three offices in the upstairs here, in the outer room, for some additional employees and reorganization in our office. And then we just signed the letter of engagement for our auditor to get started in the FY twenty-four audit. Any questions?
Under new business, we have a new case, fifty-six dash twenty-three childcare facility for governmental center complex, request for final approval for site development. Plans for a six thousand three hundred and forty-seven square foot childcare facility located in the governmental center complex.
Thank you. So the proposed modular unit is to be placed on piers as a permanent foundation in between the existing drill hall facility and Leonard Hall Drive. The facility is to be served by Leonard Town Public Water and Sewer. The modular care, childcare facility will have a hardy panel stucco siding that will be painted to match the existing brick and trims of the other buildings around the governmental center. The proposed building will be a single-story sprinkled facility that will be entered by a ramp and staircase from the front of the facing Hudson Building. The proposed area will consist of twenty-three parking spots per Chapter one fifty-five, fifty-five, Chapter B, or excuse me, Chart B. The required parking spaces for this unit is one per employee and one per six children. Based on Chart B of said ordinance, the site is required to have twenty-seven parking spots. The current proposed design is short of the ordinance requirement by four parking spots. However, if the facility is to be used by county employees, the employees may be utilizing already allocated parking spots in another part of the governmental center complex. The proposed site landscaping is providing four hundred square foot landscaping. The landscaping proposed is short of landscaping requirements by two hundred and thirty-five square feet. To date, the architectural building plans have not been provided to the town planning department or the fire marshal for review. The applicant has received final site development plan approval from St. Mary's County Soil Conservation District, St. Mary's County Public Works and Transportation. No building plans have been provided to either the town planning department or, again, the state fire marshal. Action needed today. The applicant is requesting final site plan approval for case number fifty-six dash twenty-three childcare facility governmental center complex. The planning and zoning commission can vote to approve, approve with conditions, delay, or deny a decision. And I have attached attachments in your packets.
With the exterior, will you come back to us with final plans? How's that work? Because if you want final permission, it seems like we would need to have a final architectural.
The way I see that is you could either rely on me to approve them, or you could have it come back for final facade approval. It has a facade picture. You may want to ask the folks whether that is what is going to be placed. I mean, again, I don't have any building plans, so I don't know.
It is a modular building, and maybe you want to just go and give them some information on that.
If you want to show the pictures. The dilemma we face is we have to give, pay the money to the contractor, the builder, to get the architectural plans. So we're in a catch twenty-two. I gotta, I gotta cut a one point one million dollar check to order the building, to get the architectural plans, to give to the fire marshal, or to you guys. And I've got to get, I've got to get your approval before I can go to the commissioners and ask the commissioners to cut a one point one million dollar check. So I'm kind of at a place where I have to get your approval before I can get the money to pay for the plans.
Okay, that makes sense. And what if we let you know what we're thinking, and then, you know, maybe my, I don't know what everybody else wants, but maybe I could make final decision if you know what we want.
And as long as you're in agreement with this particular style, I'll just make sure that that style is what is presented when they come in for the architectural and fire marshal.
That's pretty much the color, because you wanted to match.
Yeah, we were kind of trying to go with, I mean, the Leonard Beck Hall is kind of a little more white, has a little more weight to it on the sides, but around the facility, or around the campus, it kind of has that brick kind of color to it. If there's a requirement for a different color, you know, we can certainly accommodate that and make sure that the final submission has that represented. We do have a floor plan layout, but for the modular construction package that gets reviewed by the fire marshal, there's a lot of details about like how the structure is transported and stuff like that. The company hasn't been ready to commit the time, effort, and resources into putting it together at this time to sign the contract.
Do we really know what the landscaping is going to be in the?
On the plan, it does show the trees to be posed, but they are still two hundred and thirty-five square foot short for landscaping requirements.
There really won't be that shrubbery in the front.
So that shrubbery, it's not on the plan, but that shrubbery could, if it was planted, account for some of that two hundred and thirty-five square foot. Shrubs do meet a requirement for planting. It's just a very small number, but they certainly do. I think what we're struggling with this proposal is, it's kind of plain looking to start with, you know, I'm assuming you've got this module, and then without the shrubs, it's even plainer. Just to know what, what you could do to. I mean, it's certainly within your privy, in fact, which is as a plan, they should decide, is that they need to do two hundred and thirty-five square foot of planting on the front of the building.
So this view would be the side facing Leonard Hall Drive. So as you're driving down Leonard Hall Drive, as though you're going to the Potomac Building, this would be what you're looking at here.
Right.
If you come around, like you're going behind Leonard Hall Drill Hall, that's where the stairs and the ramp would be, which would be on the other side, but this kind of represents it.
And that's the same, that side you're speaking to is where the playground is then, right? The playground.
Uh, no, the playground's actually on the back.
On the back, okay.
Yes, so, yeah. So the back is going to be, I would say relatively screened by a playground and a fence. We'll do our best to maintain, I think, crate murals over there. I'm not sure how many of them will stay, but I know there's some that are near the transform that we brought along touch, but some of those crate murals that back up that parking lot will probably stay. And I mean, if there's a requirement to include additional landscaping along the Leonard Hall Drive side, which would be what you're looking at here, we can certainly include an additional, so if you want us to quantify plans pre shrubs, I mean, you can, maybe speak on a turn, but.
Yeah, if there, if there twenty-five square feet of shrubs, I don't know the landscape number, I don't remember anymore, but we can find money for a dozen shrubs. But since, since we came here the first time, and now our price on the, on the building has increased by the contractor by about five hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, so, so we're, I'm searching for that money for the commissioners.
Someone also might to bring to your attention that they are constructing a bioswale for the stormwater management, and that bioswale also has plantings in it. So I just didn't include them as part of our site because it's an over treatment for a different area within the governmental center complex. I think that they're providing.
Everybody can have their swale though, it's in the back.
Yeah, right, but I mean, there is plantings occurring though.
Yes, yes.
You know.
This is, the swale is getting added. You know, the entrance to the records room on the detention center on the south side of the building? So if you go, if you're looking at the detention center, you've got the entrance. I don't know if you've ever been to the detention center. I don't know if you've ever been into detention, but, but the, the entrance, the main entrance to the building is facing like two forty-five. I'm looking west, and then on the south side of the building, there's a road that goes downhill one level to the basement where the records are in, and the swale will get added over there. So it's going to be in the back of the governmental campus.
Right, and that bioswale is going to have grass plugs in it, but it looks like there's in the neighborhood of three, six, nine, so almost four hundred grass plugs, but it is just grass though.
Not, not regular grass. The grass is.
Yeah, they're vegetated. It'll kind of look like what's over there, if we can try to learn more harder.
I could, so I don't think the issue is necessarily how much, it's just like the building, it has no landscaping. You know, we're seeing it as a building with land, you know, at least a little bit of landscaping to try to dress it up a little bit. I don't think something behind the detention center is going to offset that.
No.
So I think really what you're more worried about is just dressing up the front with some landscaping a little, at least.
No good landscaping, yeah. And some, maybe some contrast at the bottom where there's red, maybe that's white. And it doesn't increase the price or something, some contrast. I'm not a designer, but.
Yeah, there's a color requirement, we can certainly make a color adjustment easily. Getting, I mean, even if we didn't get fifty shrubs or something growing in there, I don't think that would be.
I think once the shrubs get, are growing, you're not going to see that bottom skirt part is the idea. I mean, just looking at, I think they were trying to match the brick color, but I mean, if you want to see some contrast, I don't, I don't know.
There's other ways, I mean, you can frame up against afterward. Paint the door, something.
Yeah, just.
Red flowers. We, I don't think we want to micro manage it to do with the contrast of some sort, just so it doesn't look like a long red box, like a temporary trailer. We don't want to have that look. Needs to look like it's part of the complex. We also have one gentleman who would like to address the parking, he'd like to talk.
Yeah, so I'm a business owner in town here, and if we were going to expand, we, we need parking, and if I don't have the parking and I'm a landlord, I have to buy land, or I have to pay a fee for every parking spot that is not available to me. I buy public parking. The county, however, is going to be given, not a variance, but they're going to be given a grievance or leeway for four spots as a business owner or a private citizen. I, I don't think I'm entitled to the same favoritism that the county's receiving here. Meanwhile, they have fifty acres undeveloped land that seems like they have on their compound that they said in the concept of planning meeting, that they could build this whole building. It wouldn't have to be out near the rec and park area where it's very crowded already. It's very crowded where this area is. So baseball is there today, and then soccer will have four to five to seven teams at the front field at one time, and that's going to be right around five o'clock, six o'clock. Parents pick up their kids, they go right to practice. So the same time cars are coming in and out, there's going to be possibly seven teams. The county knows they have the permits for all the fields on the rec and park side, that they handle the permit process, so they would know exactly how many fields are being used, how many kids are there. You're talking two hundred kids and potentially parents with those, maybe they're able to carpool, but you're talking fifty, hundred cars at one time in addition to a child center that's very crowded. If you're going to use a playground, it gets crowded. People, they've put no parking on the grass because people park all on the grass there. So there's already now a parking for the existing structures. Now they're building another structure, and they're going to have a parking issue. But they have fifty acres undeveloped they can do. Or they have Leonard Hall, that school's being evicted. They're finding a new location. That whole building on the other side of the, I don't know what you call it, the west, south, the other side of the compound is going to be open, and I haven't heard the county say they have any plans for that yet, but it seems like if it holds kids for a school now, it could hold a child development center as well. Just some things I don't know if the county's thought about. As a business owner, I, I haven't heard the county even offer childcare supplemental care for their employees, like did they even offer supplemental expenses for their employees to find childcare? Because we do have facilities that have closed in the area that used to provide childcare. They no longer do that. So it's, I just don't want to rush something. When I go into a business operation, I try not to rush it. I, I think it through, all the possible variables. So, yeah, you guys are looking at shrubs. I'm just thinking, hey, they're going to build this facility, and if it's not used for childcare, it's now a permit facility because it's on fixed piers, they can do a U and O for some other operation. Doesn't have to be child, so they might sell you on childcare. Five years down the road, it doesn't work, they stop maintaining it, or they convert into something else, and now we have a parking issue because there's not enough spots. So a lot of faults I just had, and I think they have the land. I think they also have additional buildings on the compound. I just don't know if the county's thought about it. That's all. Thanks.
We have a huge parking lot right there. So what we're doing is expanding the existing parking lot. It's, when you're coming around Leonard Hall, it's the wedge piece you can turn in at the drill hall, and the parking lot gets bigger and bigger and bigger. Some of that's used for overflow for the courthouse, but basically that triangular end at the northern side is, there's, it's never full, that parking lot is never full. So if you're trying to get into the, into the Potomac Building, you can park, you never have to go more than the second or third aisle away from the Potomac Building, and it's just open beyond that, unless somebody's using it to park at courthouse and walk across the street. So we have, across the governmental center, there's more than ample parking. There's parking on the, between the detention center and the state courthouse, so that parking lot's almost always empty. Parking where Leonard Hall is, where the junior naval academy meets, and they, they're starting school tomorrow in that building again this year. There is parking that's always available there as well, that's at the other end of the fields. So if you come in for a planning commission, or a, a Monday or Thursday night for board of the fields, there's always parking there. The parents for the kids playing soccer park in that parking lot as well. So there's, there's a lot of parking at the governmental campus.
Affected, so, so we take a lot of things into consideration. I talked before, yeah, as shared parking, because, you know, the facilities, the soccer facilities, the fields are being used usually nights and weekends, and the governmental center isn't even operational, so there's, if we took a number of parking spaces throughout the governmental center complex, I don't think they're going to show a shortage based on what I've seen over there. I mean, there's always a lot of parking right beside this, this, where this is proposed to go. I've never seen that lot full, but we didn't do a, a site, an entire site of governmental center, how many parking spaces. We were just basing it the new spaces that they're building. But we also take into consideration the shared use of the parking lot right beside of it, the times a day, but also with this facility, we took into consideration that it's the employees are the only ones that can use this. So they're coming to park there, a lot of them anyway, and so it's not going to be an additional car. They're, they're coming to work anyway, and they're going to drop the kid off here, and then they're going to go to their office. So just a lot of things that go into consideration. I wouldn't have concerns about those parking spaces. I just, if you all are wanting to see some landscaping to just, you know, make the building look better, some of, some of the decisions, I mean, it's not up to us to decide if the commissioners build this or use Leonard Hall. I mean, we have to really just, we're looking at just this site plan, that's a decision for the county commissioners, that's not really our decision. So if you question that, then you just need to kind of talk to the county commissioners about that. But our, we just have to really look at the site plan, are they meeting our regulations for that?
Right.
And make our decision on that particular thing.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions? I know that when we talked about the area being crowded, I think part of the reason why they would have chosen to put the daycare there is so that it would be close to where the parents were. And if it was my child, then I would, it's also better. Especially, you know, when they're really young. Do they really make a motion?
So are y'all good with, with how they do the architectural before, you guys want to have to?
I think so. I think it's good to see it. But it depends on, well, I mean, if they say, I'm sure, I'm, I'm taking that you don't want to wait another month for approval.
Well, my concern is if you say it has to come back.
Yeah, then your price is going to go up.
Well, I can't, I can't get an approval from the commissioner.
But I would like to say mine. If you, if you're going to present the architectures to Mike, then why couldn't you email them to us and we can email comments back?
I said, would you do that? Because that's your wish.
Yes, then we don't have to wait a month.
Yeah, that sounds good. But you could give them final approval with that as a certain.
Was that, was that?
I think there's two parts to what we're saying, the landscaping, you know, to, to at least reflect kind of once in a picture, and also just something to make the, the whole building not look just like one big red, you know, covered trailer kind of thing, just kind of look from a distance.
And so it doesn't get held up any longer, I mean, I think you would say that we don't have to get back to you unless we want to, and you would give us a timeframe like two or three days.
Right, and that's fine. And I, and to go along with that, there is going to be a review time for the fire marshal to review these plans.
Right.
So we don't have the plans at this time, so there's time for them to make those changes or whatever they're going to do to accommodate your provisions.
So I don't think that works too. I mean, you could give them final site plan approval, they can move forward and order their building, they can't have a U and O for the building itself until we get the plans to the fire marshal. So if you give them final site plan approval, they need to come back with the final architecturals. I mean, you can go ahead and order the building, and then they'll release the drawings, I'm assuming, and maybe look at the color again, but they can move forward and get the project going, but they can't get a U and O. Maybe you want to see the drawing one more time and what landscaping they're going to put in, so that, once you give the final approval, I mean, there can't be like phone call, I mean, you know, that just doesn't work. So you can give them a final approval for their site plan to move forward, and then just ask, once they get the drawings, so that you can see the architecturals, they decide on their colors, and then, and review the landscape, and so before the U and O is issued, you guys want to see those things again.
Okay, so that wouldn't be, if we were to come back and for us to review, we'd not be holding them up.
No, they could go ahead and order the building, they could start on the site work. I mean, you know, we don't always have fire marshal approval, the car wash, for instance. They, they got their permit to go ahead and do their site work, and then the fire marshal is reviewing it. They can't get their U and O until they have their fire, fire marshal approval. So they can still move forward with everything, and then just once they have the, the building drawings, then bring those back to you, and that's not going to hold them up either. But it gives you guys a review, but just doing it by email, you don't have any authority to tell them anything at that point, and it's, needs to be in a public meeting. I mean, so I think if you want to see the drawings again and see the front, you know, what, what it's going to look like and what landscaping they, they actually would put in, you would let them move forward with their final site plan, and then just come back again with a little bit more detail once they have the drawings.
So I'm not sure what a motion is going to say, so we.
She's, she's radio.
You're going to give, you're going to give them final site plan approval with the cap, but you, you still, once the fire marshal drawings are in, you want to see the building architecturals one more time and the landscaping before use and occupancy is issued.
What is the word you use to describe architecturals and landscaping? Because.
Just say.
And then review, I don't think that's correct.
You know, I would just say, really, it's a landscape issue, right?
Landscaping, I guess, facade, facade.
Yeah.
How about facade and, facade and landscaping, final design.
So are we saying also that, from my understanding is, is that I would issue them a building permit without the fire marshal approval?
Sounds like we need to tell the fire marshal approval.
Right.
I, I need to get the fire marshal approval.
Well, they can, they, you can order them, like, give them a grading permit, they can get the site work sorted.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they can order the building.
Yes.
And then, you know, then they'll be able to get the drawings and get them submitted to the fire marshal.
Okay, I got you. And that's the same thing I did with the other place. So I issued them a building permit with, basically a grading permit.
Right, for the site work to be done.
For the site work.
And there's not really construction here, the buildings will come and they're going to set it, so you're going to give them a building permit so they can get everything else in, relit, they'll release the drawings, get them reviewed by the fire marshal, you guys can see them, see it again, and then you can get their U and O.
So it's not pending fire marshal review?
It is still pending fire marshal review, and, and, yes, that's part of your motion. You said final site plan approval, pending fire marshal review, and facade and landscaping review for you all.
Okay.
And then I can't handle it at that point, other than the facade.
She sort of has to spell it, you know.
Just have to say it, right?
That's quite a word.
I mean, does that make everybody comfortable?
Uh-huh, I, I.
And that works for you guys too?
If I've got it correctly.
All right, good.
I will make a motion. Let's see, I move to, or we move to approve request for final site plan approval for case number fifty-six dash twenty-three childcare facility located in the governmental center complex pending fire marshal approval and landscaping and facade, final design.
Review by the planning commission.
Review by the planning commission.
And that gives you all what you need?
Yep, no worries.
All right.
We'll go with this.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You better hurry before your price goes up. Does anybody have any comments about? Does anybody have any comments about our in-house project? I did not. Any questions or... Making a motion for...
A motion to adjourn.
A second? All of us in favor say aye.